Good evening and welcome to the June 13th Board of Directors meeting.
Um, I'd like to make a, uh, I'd like to move to add, uh, in an agenda item in between nine and 10 that would be following the public input. It would be, it would be an executive session, um, pursuant to one MRSA four oh five six A evaluation of employees.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Um, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will have our public input statement read by our vice chair.
The first public input session is a 21 minute session with each person having no longer than three minutes to make a statement. But a second public input session may be held at the end of the meeting if allowed by the board chair. Each speaker will give his or her name, town, and reason for speaking. Public input is designated for district residents, but the board chair may grant non-residents the opportunity to address the board. Statements concerning subject matter that falls under the law regarding executive sessions, for example, matters involving personnel, cannot be made during public input. We as a community pledge to treat each other as we wish to be treated. We pledge to seek understanding when there may be disagreement. Regardless of outcomes or opinions, we pledge to move forward with respect. This is a time for comments and/or questions for the board, but please be aware that some questions may not be able to be answered at this meeting.
Thank you. Uh, public input at this time?
Hi, my name is Court Janice. I'm nine years old and I live in Northburg and I go to Northburg Elementary School. These are my words. My mom helped me organize and type them, but I did all the thinking. I heard my mom talking to my dad about what people shared on the Northburg Facebook page and I want to learn more. So I got all the details by reading the posts and comments and I didn't like what some of these people were saying. It's my opinion, few people shared untrue words about our school. And I might not be a member of the school board, but my mom is and she talks to me about the important things happening about schools. I want to respond to the people on Facebook making up rumors with no proof. Please stop worrying about yourselves. If the kids in our district don't get taught, then they can't grow up, get jobs, and take care of themselves. And you might still be paying for that. These people that are making up rumors, are they volunteering at the school? If not, where are they getting their information from? I encourage them to volunteer and then see what their opinions are. If you go to our schools and see the learning, they see a different story. One Facebook comment mentioned that D-Day isn't taught, but two of my fellow classmates shared about D-Day at our last bear assembly in front of our whole school. This past year, I was in a whole ton of clubs. By the end of the year, I was able to teach my classmates and share what I learned with them to help our whole class be smarter. We have so many awesome teachers in our district who take time out of their schedules to help us learn more and because of that, we are better learners. Thank you.
Holly from Berwick. Congratulations on the MSAD sixty school budget passing as well as the bond. MSAD sixty families, grandparents, and community members showed up in overwhelming support, not only at the budget hearing in May, but again at the polls on June 11th. I hope our school board is starting to see and truly understand that the tides are turning and the MSAD sixty families in all three towns want what is best for Noble and are willing to support you to do it. Now it is up to you to honor or not honor all of those hundreds of voices who showed up at the budget hearing and the polls who voted in support of your budget and the amendment successfully passing it. Please honor the amendment to prevent the consolidation of specials. It's not cut the Noble High School world language teacher. Lastly, one of our school board members commented at the last school board meeting uh, that he want, felt it quite necessary to take a deep dive into the MSAD sixty teachers' code of conduct. I would very much like to suggest that you also take a deep dive into our school board code of conduct, especially when it comes to social media. Social media was quite busy on Tuesday. I read through hundreds of comments and posts from not only our community members, but also a couple of our very own school board members. I was gobsmacked at some of the comments I read that those school board members posted publicly, most of which weren't even factual and even targeted teachers in our district and MSAD families find it's unprofessional. It is also unfortunately a direct reflection of the entire school board, even if most of you do not agree with it. I can quite, it can quite literally create an us against them mentality which nobody wants. Again, congratulations on the budget being passed. Please do the right thing and honor the amendment. The tides are turning and the people have spoken. Other public input? Uh, moving on to the minutes of May sixth first.
Sixteen.
I'm sorry, sixteen.
Motion to approve the minutes of May sixteen. All in favor?
And the minutes of June sixth?
Been amended.
Fix my error. You're welcome.
And you got that, uh, I was the one who read the public input statement.
Great. I didn't get that one, but I guess I'll switch that out.
Do we have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I make a motion that we accept the, um, minutes from June sixth as amended.
Definitely.
All second. In favor?
And abstain because it wasn't. Okay, uh, budget ratification, signing of the warrants for fiscal year twenty five and assess.
Okay, we have a couple of things to go through first. Um, the last part of that is a motion to approve the assessment warrants and that needs to be read and I've made a copy of what it needs to say or how to read it. Um, the first ones I'm just going to talk about verbally and then we'll have the motion and then, um, Denise will come up and we'll go through and we'll, we'll do the signing again like we did that one night. So the first one is main school administrative district number sixty computation and declaration of votes. The total number of votes cast in all of the municipalities within MSAD sixty, the district, in the affirmative and in the negative on question one of the warrant and notice of election of the district budget validation recum- referendum held June 11th, two thousand twenty-four relating to the adoption of the district's twenty-four, twenty-five budgets are as follows. The town of Berwick, five hundred fifty-eight affirmative, two hundred eighty negative. Town of Lebanon, four, five hundred forty-eight affirmative, four thirty-eight negative. Town of North Berwick, three eighty-four affirmative, three thirteen negative. Total, one thousand four hundred ninety affirmative. And then total for the negative is one thousand thirty-one. So that's that and that will need signatures. The next one is the total number of votes cast in all of the municipalities within the main school administrative district number sixty in the affirmative on question one of the warrant and notice of election of the district referendum held on June 11th, two thousand twenty-four relating to the issuance of bonds or notes of the district for minor, minor capital projects and purposes is one thousand six hundred seventy-two. And the total number of votes cast in all of the municipalities in the district in the negative on said question is eight hundred forty-nine. Said votes being computed as followed. Berwick, the town of Berwick, six hundred fifteen in the affirmative, two hundred twenty-eight in the negative. Town of Lebanon, six hundred fourteen in the affirmative, three hundred seventy-one in the negative. Town of North Berwick, four hundred forty-three in the affirmative, two hundred fifty in the negative. The total is one thousand six hundred seventy-two in the affirmative and eight hundred forty-nine in the negative. So those are those.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion, um, for each of those, basically asking for, um, the submission of the computation and declaration of votes. So the first one would be specific to the, um, budget ratification. And then the second motion would be specifically for the SRF ratification. So do I hear a motion?
Motion?
Do we have to read a certain language?
Oh, not that.
Computation and declaration of votes.
A second.
Who was the first? Okay.
All in favor? And we need another?
Yeah, the next one is specific to the SRF ratification, same thing, submission of the computation and declaration of votes as Ms. Gouveire read.
I make that motion.
Okay.
A second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you.
This next one is the motion to approve the assessment warrants and installment schedules. So here's the motion. Does someone want to read it?
I'll read it. Okay.
I move that the warrant for assessment of tax and the assessment schedule and notice of installments for each member municipality prepared by the treasurer for fiscal year July one, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five be approved and be issued in form presented to this meeting. And that the treasurer be, treasurer be authorized and directed to deliver to each member municipality its warrant of assessment of tax and its assessment schedule and notice of installments.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're gonna take a moment to have things signed. They're gonna be in the same order. Denise is gonna be up here.
There's not as many as the last time.
Start them here and pass that.
Because we don't have to.
Does it have to be?
I know they're actually like.
Okay.
It's just on the same one every time.
It has to be black.
It has to be black. I don't matter.
Black or blue, no, no. Um, I don't think it matters, black or blue, but sign on the same line.
Yeah.
Okay. Purple, not so much.
I've got blue.
Thank you.
I kind of like them. I'm into green. Like farm, lucky clothes. Yep.
Oh, no, no.
Oh.
Oh, 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 oh.
Bring us back to the.
I can go down.
Go for your job.
Yeah, I will. And then, yeah, just hover. Yeah.
Can I spell my name right?
I'm gonna hover down here.
Keeping an eye on that stuff. Just, oh, see where it is. I look the same. I'll take you and I'll just kind of write some things and hope it goes. This top four. So again, this is. My mother, she's the new, new song. Again, let's, this is the top four. I'm gonna make my name so long. By Ms. Audra. See, not nearly.
So ignore this one.
Ignore the second one. Yeah. I'm evidently the focus here.
Okay, Allison.
Yeah, do it.
Those last two.
That's it?
Just a top form.
Okay.
Some listening to Denise.
I know.
When we do the other ones, we have to put them out. When we do the other ones, you're posting a bunch in different places. One single.
Oh, okay. So my head's gonna go down here on this one? So we don't, we don't sign this. Yeah, okay. That's fine. We don't sign this. The second one's for Audra.
So this one doesn't have to be on exactly the same.
Yeah, somebody was in a summer mood. Alright, thank you.
Perfect.
I think we're ready.
Okay, uh, next is budget update.
Okay, so the budget update, um, a couple, just a couple of things. We do have the three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars that, um, we need to spend a little time discussing, uh, just so that we have some feedback about how you would like us to move ahead with that money. So just discussion.
Twenty-five thousand dollars for the bus drivers.
For you guys.
Alright, yes.
So that's just gonna get divided up somehow?
Um, the suggestion is to have it be in a stipend form.
Oh, okay.
Um, but we can certainly not do it in a stipend form, however you would prefer to do that.
So in a stipend form, it wouldn't impact salary negotiations?
Correct.
So a stipend, what would that, what would that mean exactly?
It's about five hundred fifty dollars per person.
So it'd be like a bonus?
Yes.
Essentially.
Okay.
Yeah. Do they get taxed differently on that, that they'd lose more with it that way versus salary?
They are working on it to make it be, um, how we not, but just like basically at least the five hundred dollars is the goal. So it's like, they're working through that, but the, the problem is that every single person has a different well, and salary and tax. So, yeah. A stipend is actually the most fair. It is. Right. In, in terms of our thought process on it. And, and we are in this place of, we're beginning negotiations with a different union with them for next year. Um, so we're just trying, we want to make sure that they get this right off the, right off the bat, actually, as soon as we can.
So it's, this everybody receives the same amount regardless of time and service, years to district, all that stuff, right?
Right.
So.
And this is a one-time stipend?
This is a one-time.
Okay. Is that covering like on open positions if they're filled by the fall or?
Uh, it would be the current, it would be current people working for us. Yeah. When would this be awarded and how would you determine if someone was not eligible?
After July first would be awarded.
Okay.
And ineligible would be anybody that are, that we hire, that have, that weren't, anyone that was hired that was not driving now or working in transportation now.
Yeah. Okay, so, so would this, would this include? So if they started in, say, April.
Would they get the same as someone who has been driving since September?
Yeah, I mean, I think our goal is to just like honor the work that they're doing. And so, yes, some people who may have started a little bit later will benefit, but in general, it's really just about honoring that work because it's a hard job.
Where this is going into the upcoming budget, do they just get it right away July first or do they like need to? Like what's gonna work?
The goal is to, I think the goal, and, um, I need to go back and watch the video probably to make sure exactly, but I believe it's to reward and, and, um, compensate existing bus drivers. Um, that being said, I'm not against it, but I fear if we give them something July first or we'll be looking at anyone saying like, thanks, I'm out of here. I'm not actually gonna drive this year.
You wanna just talk about salaries starting July first and?
Or yeah, how that works.
Come on down.
Yes.
So I think what I would say is this, if we don't, this twenty-five thousand was, uh, planned for, for the fiscal year. In theory, we could give it out July first, but we could wait till May. I mean, you know, there, we could wait till later in the year and assess it then, or you're never going to really prevent somebody from take, getting it and then saying, okay, I'm done now. Um, so it really is what you feel is appropriate and is it appropriate that, you know, bus drivers and mechanics benefit, you know, get, get this award? Like, do you want everybody in the department to get it, the secretaries who also work very hard or? So those are the, kind of the nuances points.
Hmm, could we give it September first?
You can give it whenever you want.
Are they all part of the same contract?
No. The bus, the bus aides are under the support staff contracts. The drivers are not under, uh, an associate, a union right now. And, um, the mechanics are part of that not being in a union right now as well.
In transition.
Yeah, they're in transition and they've been, they've been, um, assigned to a union. So somebody has picked them up. They were, um, they were released two, maybe three years ago, um, really based on size from the AFLCIO and then they've been re-upped with the Teamsters. So.
Oh, like I know a lot of those discussions has been like bus drivers aren't getting paid enough and that like, so it was a Kenabunk who just upped their rates incredibly. Did they, was that just bus drivers? Like, are we suffering for mechanics too? Like, how are mechanics compare like?
So I will only say that our mechanics drive. Because when they're in, when there is no, nobody to drive, our director drives, our assistant director drives, our, um, Jeremiah, who oversees the whole facilities, they drive all the, if, if they need to have to get kids to school, everybody in that, in that place drives. There's only two who don't drive. One is, um, not able to anymore and one smartly never got a CDL because she's a secretary. And said, no, thank you. Right? That's okay. So if they have a CDL in that, in that office, they are filling in wherever they can. And we don't want to put it into salaries.
We can't. We, this was just one proposal. Yeah.
Because if putting, putting it into salaries, we'd go further to recruit, but.
Well, it would be, you know, if you're looking at five hundred to five hundred fifty dollars depending on the exact, uh, thing, you're looking at over twenty-six or pays or twenty-one pays, you're.
Yeah.
You know, it's just not very much money.
Delivering it. Okay.
You know, you'd be.
We did think about that. It's like, can we, because twenty-five thousand is generous, but in terms of it, but it's not going to make up, you know, a dollar an hour increase or any of the things that when you're, when you're fighting the battle of, um, around our area. So at one point, we were the highest paying district for drivers. And as soon as that happened, everybody around us started to lift, because that's what happens. It's just the way it is. What we're trying to, it's a small niche of folks who are willing and able. And so the, the wars, the salary wars have begun. Um, and twenty-five thousand doesn't really do a lot for that piece. That's why we were trying to like, do we honor it by giving a bonus that they can feel right now?
If, um, we, if it's five hundred dollars over twenty-one pays, it's almost twenty-four dollars a pay.
They're.
So about fifty dollars a month.
Okay, but that's not horrible.
No, I mean, it's just a different way to do it and, um.
And that would have a bigger impact though going forward. I mean, that's not necessarily good.
That would be, that would be continuing.
But it would have a bigger impact moving forward than just giving out a bonus and that's the end of it.
Because basically we're not saying that this is gonna be part of their ongoing contract. This is a one-year.
A one-time thing if we do it as a stipend. Right. Yes, I mean, there is that difference. So you just, you need to decide what, what works for you.
It can go, you know, you, you have discretion.
Do we, do we have any data on years of service to the district?
We do.
Give me.
You mean how, how long each person has been driving for the district?
I do. In a second, I can find it.
Is there any, um, I, I, again, the, it's trying to figure out the intention, you know, is it, is it the intention of the board to reward those who have been with the, the, in other words, you take the twenty-five thousand, you divide it by the total number of years of service and that's the amount you give per year of service. If someone's been driving twenty years would have a larger stipend than someone who's been driving just one year. Is that, um, is that, is that of interest to the board or is that not?
I think that's where I'm trying to go is this, if the goal is to draw, to boost our retention, our recruiting and our retention, not sure one time then gets us there. Alright.
Anything?
Yeah. Always given, right? There's another way of looking at it, right? Is, is to reward those who have stuck with us. Who could have gone to Kennybunk.
Right.
But chose to stay here because they like our community, like our kids, they like who they're working for.
So we have, I, I don't think a, a flat amount is really a, a fair distribution. You know, especially, you know, if you, if you started in April and you drove two, two months and a week over somebody who has been doing it the entire year. I, I don't really think that's an equitable distribution.
Um, did we? Give, I don't think I was on the board yet, but we're, Ed Tex given a stipend a couple of years ago.
Ed Tex have a stipend if they cover a classroom?
No, wasn't there like a special, all Ed Tex got a certain amount or something? Okay. Precedent wise, was that distributed evenly among Ed Tex or was longevity looked at there?
It was anybody who was employed as of a certain date, I believe.
Okay.
Um, whether or not they were three months in or thirty years in.
But everyone got the same amount regardless? Okay. I'm just bringing, I don't have an opinion on my, they're, I'm just bringing that up as far as precedence.
With other communities. So that we were more, not more aligned, but similar in how we were distributing that, those kinds.
I think it's really about what the purpose of this. Mm-hmm. It really is. Uh, just, just for some data, the, of the thirty two, thirty-three people that are on my list that's in front of me, which is not all inclusive of some of the office folks and things like that. Um, there's only one who was not here the full year. Um, and then there are ten of those that have been with us for twenty years. And there are, yeah.
We should send them a note.
I know. Thank you. And then there are, let's see. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve that have been with us since two thousand twenty that just like started from two thousand twenty on. And then there's a few more in between there, right? So, um, yeah, so a, a lot of folks have been here between fifteen and twenty years and more. And if we put it into salary, they wouldn't have that bonus hit on taxes either because it's pretty significant.
Yeah. What, what is, what is, can we answer that? What is the difference of, of that between as a bonus versus in salary?
Believe.
I know, I, but I'm just dying to know, I gotta ask the question.
I think um extra money is taxed that gang five for some. Um, and that might be twenty five for feds, it might be another five for state.
Yeah.
Um, so but it also depends on everybody, like, we are not shooting to make sure everybody nets the same. We are shooting to make sure everybody gets the goals that's appropriate, however you decide. Uh, because, you know, again, everybody has different tax situations.
I like, just, you know, hey, you said we should send out a thank you note. I think this is a thank you note. Uh, that's the way I look at it. I look at it, this is a thank you note, um, thank you note from the community to to our drivers and and how we, we, that staff, drivers and however, um, I think this is the thank you note, and I, it's my opinion, it should be contingent on the use of service to this district. That's my opinion right now.
Well, we do have uh one gal who's been here forty five years.
Oh, my goodness.
And one who's been here forty three years.
Oh, my goodness.
Again, do we have to decide this tonight, or can we like? Are you, I'm so sorry Denise, are you able to crunch the numbers of like?
Conversation, right?
We don't have to, I mean, we're not forced to pay out until June of next year, right?
We just wanna do it thoughtfully.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea.
Someone with like two dollars and someone with twenty.
Yeah.
Like, we need to be aware of that, too.
What would you, what more information would you like?
Kind of like, like high, middle, or like longest, middle, newest longevity, like what the breakdown would look like if you did it by longevity and kind of?
So longevity is usually broken into um age bands or or longevity bands. Like to see who's in which band of longevity? Is that how you want a similar band?
Kind of figure out like, yeah, what the?
That we can say.
Yeah, but thank you, the distribution, that's what I need. Yeah, like.
Did it by.
Is it gonna be like fifty dollars for like the under five versus seven hundred for, you know, like, because I don't think that was also like, I don't think that was the intent of it being put in either. So I think just seeing how that, they don't have to be perfect.
I have, I have.
Yeah, like, that's a good question. Just asking what the range would be.
Yeah, because of that, it's a exceptional service, like of some of these drivers, like, that's incredible that they've been here for so long, and obviously, like, that's wonderful, wanna reward that, but also I think the intent was for everyone to get.
Something of substance.
Yeah.
All right, we have other monies too, so we have need to sort of do a lot more information. About three hundred thousand?
World language is amazing.
Yeah, that one, yeah. That one.
I say certainly do. Well, yeah, I would love to see that put back in.
The cost of that one being put back in?
That is a lot, eighty thousand dollars is budgeted. Um, that is for a full time, that's what we um budget for new, you know, any new teacher hires, because we spend that much, that money, so that would be that.
That is salary and benefits, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So that leaves two twenty.
Um. But it, so knowing that we're not literally putting two existing people back in because Smith resigned, what does that look like for art? And would you? Would we want a full time hired or a partial? Like, I think, I think it was clear that like people did not feel super confident with the exact sharing schedule that was presented. But is, I mean, do we do?
Were there at, what, before the consolidated, were they all ed tech positions?
No.
No. There were only two that were.
Two and two? Are, and PE are under the teacher's contract. And library and STEAM are under the ed tech contract, support staff contract.
Demon, what?
Library, right, yeah.
So Lauren, question or point to discuss is that we have the art teacher that had, we, that we accepted the resignation last week. So the question becomes, how does that get filled? Is that your, that's your?
Thanks, yes. Okay, so if we were to replace that position, and this has been one of my, been my question all along, is that we had people who were teaching in contracts but weren't meeting the contract requirements, which can create all kinds of problems. So if you were to replace that position, you would, you, you can't really hire that person full time, because then you're hiring them knowing that they won't be teaching the contract if you're putting it back as was. So you would, wouldn't we have to, and I'm not, I don't want people getting mad at me saying I'm not doing this for anything. All along, I thought this, what should have happened was there should have been a split. So whatever this extra position is for doing all these wonderful things that are happening, should be separated, because it's not part of the contract they're in.
Or it should have been grieved before it came to us to reduce the positions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think that conversation, I wish that had been better explained, because I know I've been barbecued over having these conversations, but for me, this is partly a contract conversation, because the district is putting themselves in a difficult position, knowing that they have teachers aren't meeting the contract, and others grieve that. So if we're gonna put that position back, it really should be two positions, the part time teachers contract for the classes they'd be teaching, and then there should be another one for the other extra stuff that was getting done, right?
Then my question would be, is if there are extras happening, and we were, we were made aware that there were extras happening at North Berwick and Nolton that were not happening at Lebanon Elementary and HUSI. If we're adding these two positions in, my feeling is, whatever extras are there, the extras are also provided at the other districts somehow, some way, by adding these positions. So I think adding these positions causes a pretty major shuffle across everything. I don't know how to figure it out, but that's why we have an administrative team too.
I would like to see, you know, some kind of, some ideas, I guess, on how we can take those four people and they can service, you know, their one day and whatnot. I don't know, there's really different ways you can do it, but they can service the other schools as well with all the extras that.
Flip side to that conversation, I was like, when looking at equity, there isn't complete equity amongst all the elementary schools, like some of them have more, um I have the right words somewhere else, self-contained programs, I hope that's the PC, tears of the um, and life skills programs and behavioral specific programs that other schools don't. So like, where do we say every school has to have all the same things? And do they?
But that's not really an equal conversation, because HUSI bears bears those programs for everybody, so that's.
HUSI, Levin and Ann Nelson all have self-contains.
Right.
Institutions North Berwick are transported to.
Right.
They're not getting.
But that's, I'm just saying, like, but the other kids.
My concern is that's an extra, right? There, there are extra benefits, we've heard about advanced art and and other things, wonderful, I, yes, they're wonderful. But we have students across the district who do not have those opportunities.
I think that behavior kids and other kids are being put into those programs, because we don't have the same exact programs within all the schools.
So you're saying that those programs were.
And this is me saying it as a parent, this is not me saying it as the administrator of that school.
What I would say to that is, some of it has to do with space, and some of it has to do with numbers. North Berwick has lower numbers than HUSI. HUSI, Berwick is the largest student population. So you may have one or two students in North Berwick who may need a program, a spec, a specific program. HUSI probably has eight or nine students that do just because of the population, you know. So to run a life skills program in North Berwick for two students at that cost, and that skill set is huge. And so we've made satellite programs um, so that the, you know, all of the training goes into those, those programs.
That's kind of a consolidation, which is what we were.
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess I'd like to hear from admin.
Yeah, so we have a couple examples here, um, and I don't necessarily, I won't use names, I'll use positions, just so you.
Thank you.
That idea. The first, we, the administrative team met and we discussed some ideas. So the biggest part that we have is um MHA. Mary Heard Academy does not have um routine specials. They are not um getting support from specialists per se. They're getting, and I'll say, I'll clarify, one day a week, one PE teacher goes over. So we did talk about the fact that they're going into um some really good unit work next year, I, and um having some support from some of our specialists over there for a couple of days of each of those sections would help with the project-based learning. And that would give those students um an opportunity for art, for, for more PE and for STEAM. And that would help balance out the, the actual instruction of specials for, for students. Um, and then in North Berwick, there is, um, the guidance counselor right now is teaching some of the second step lessons. And um the discussion occurred about one of the specialists over there picking up some of the second step lessons, so that would make that a very full schedule, but that would allow the guidance counselor to work, free her up to work in, with groups of students and doing some other things. So there are.
Is that consistent with our element? Those that they, guidance counselors don't teach second step?
That's correct. Yeah. So that would put North Berwick in line with Berwick and Lebanon for that.
So what about Lebanon and HUSI?
The special programs.
Special programs.
Extras.
Well, I don't know what to call them. Yeah, this would, this would alleviate, um, and I wouldn't say alleviate, but this would take the opportunity for those extras to not necessarily occur if we move um some of our specialists to help out um with programming at Mary Heard Academy, with the project-based learning at Mary Heard Academy, because those, those would be full days.
So you're saying there wouldn't, we wouldn't accomplish the goal, we wouldn't put.
Well, nobody would have them.
Extra things back.
It wouldn't be extra, right? It would, it would just, it would be that the specialists all are more aligned with their teaching schedules. So the special, the extras wouldn't necessarily happen during the day like they are currently in some schools. So there wouldn't be an extra, that's correct.
And that would be across the district like that?
Yes.
So we'd put back the positions, I'm confused where the money would be going. So we'd be spending.
So you would, for example, one of the um discussions was because of physical education. So one PE teacher would be rifled in that, you know, we consolidated. So if you reinstate that position, you would have a PE teacher full time for North Berwick and for Berwick, because those, you know, Nolton and North Berwick were your two. You put them in full time, but the, how, how they shift is that there's going to be some support at MHA. So they'll pick up the schedule at MHA.
Okay, but they're gonna be day, five days a week doing PE?
Right.
MHA?
No.
Because I don't have that many kids.
So the proposal for North Berwick had been that they need three days of PE, so then there were two days. So those two days would move to MHA. And it's hard doing this without names, but.
And we leave the position at Nolton?
We'd leave the full time position at Nolton, we'd leave a full time position at North Berwick.
So this would all be PE, even the one at Nolton?
When, when Nolton then have three open days?
Yeah.
On PE?
So I, I mean, I can go deeper, we just haven't, I'll, I'll go deeper, so. Because you're putting the cart in front of the horse as far as names of staff that may not have this information.
Right.
And it's dicey, you know, as far as that goes. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna use names. So the PE teacher at Nolton School is already going one day a week to MHA. So that PE teacher could essentially go two days to MHA and do three days at, in um, at Nolton. So that would be a full, that would be a pretty full schedule. The PE teacher in North Berwick would teach PE and then teach second step. So, so that would be a full, full schedule. The librarian at um, let's see, North Berwick Elementary School would, um, this is, again, these are proposals, right? Go one, a half a day to Nolton School to help with the schedule in the morning because of the fact that we have somebody teaching STEAM and library, it's a combination. So that would alleviate um some stress to the schedule there, and then assist with literacy at North Berwick Elementary School, because um, Liz had, had taken one ed tech out for literacy to put into behavior, um, ed tech. So then the librarian would run library classes, helping out half a day in, at the um Nolton School, and then the rest of the time would be working with intervention groups. So that would be a full schedule. And then, um, let's see, then we have art at Nolton and art at North Berwick. So that's all, that's a discussion, right? If you hire part time at Nolton, I mean, part time at North Berwick, then that stays part time, and that person does not pick up any other responsibilities or duties. It's, it's. It's a part time, right. Um, and then you have art at Nolton that could potentially go over to help MHA for um two days. And then the STEAM again would be the STEAM in North Berwick would have a couple of days in North Berwick and then go to MHA. And the STEAM at Nolton stays because it's a split position. She's running library and STEAM, so that's a full load.
Holy moly, I know, right?
No, but that really helps.
I wanna see that one.
That helps clarify, thank you.
Yes.
This is all, that would be all continued finding a part time art teacher.
Right, and then we would just, if that were not the case, then we would talk about how to, what, what we would do with a couple of extra days to support other.
So MTA would have, what, two days of PE?
Yeah, thanks, Drew.
And how many days of art?
Two days of art.
Two days of art, and then?
Two days of STEAM. So there could be a, uh, you know, like a collaboration between STEAM and art or STEAM and PE to help with that project-based learning, those activities that they're doing.
So doing this would free up the guidance counselor at MBEES to do.
Yes.
Extra.
More traditional.
Support.
Yeah, yeah, the lunch bunches, the lunch groups, some additional classroom support.
What is, um, what is the um, what is the potential for having those sorts of things at L S and Vivian, HUSI?
In terms of the, with the guidance department?
With whoever. So. I guess what I'm asking probably is something you can't tell me now, but I'm like, where are we with the three hundred thousand based on the scenario that you just gave us? And how could, what do we have left for resource to sort of even that out? I, I am, I mean, I, I'm concerned that the tax, the tax increase hits Berwick and Lebanon harder, and it isn't if, if we're saying we don't have access to that. Um, I'd love to see where we're at with three hundred thousand if we can.
But it sounds like it would balance things out better.
Without, yeah, definitely.
You know what I mean?
Oh, definitely, yeah, yeah.
So, so that's essentially one scenario, right?
Yeah, that's one, great.
Are there other scenarios that you guys have considered that you decided not to, you just said that's not?
The other consideration is to have everybody be full time and then work the schedule so that um, you know, extras are happening in different schools. So some people would still have to move. You know, somebody would need to go to HUSI school, somebody would need to go to Lebanon, so we still wanna prioritize MHA. We had um an artist that volunteered her time this year at MHA, and um they did some amazing work. Um, but that just showed us the great need that we, we have. Um, so we would still be, you know, supporting MHA, HUSI School, Lebanon.
We look at both model?
Sure.
That would look like, yeah.
Yeah.
This could almost be something like one day of a week. They go where? Or it could be for a quarter.
Yes.
They have music special, whatever, extra, we gotta have a term, but.
I think, um, yes.
And the next quarter, it switches to STEAM or whatever.
Yep, and I think a lot of it could be dependent upon what that project-based learning piece is. Is it more like the first one and two, because they're six week rotations? So is it like, um, the first two are more about STEAM and PE? You know, is the next one more about art, you know, so it really could be dependent on what rotation we're doing with, with the activities and the units.
We just needed some direction from you guys in terms of like, what are you thinking? Where do you want us to put our energy? And we'll go back to the.
And we'll go back to the, to the team and this was just one sort of iteration.
And you, and I know it's gonna be a pain, but I just need to visually see.
Your paper, kind of your sketches for the plans.
Yes.
Yes.
I know, you, obviously you gotta prepare for the beginning of school year, cause it's right around the corner for, this way it is seen, so this is a, this is an issue that needs to be resolved relatively.
Exactly. So we can have this, we can have this information for you for next week.
Okay.
Um, the other thing I just wanted to point out is that there was concern among administration about if we add a lot of extras in during the day, what comes out?
Yeah.
You know, that concern about.
Yeah.
Well, what, what, what happened this year?
And what came out of North Berwick?
On during the day, what?
Well, they were going on during lunch and recess, some of them. Some of them were going in at the end, like at the end of the day. But if you are sending certain staff to certain buildings, you may not have the flexibility that you have if somebody's in your building.
Yeah, I would say we cannot, we can't impact academic learning.
No, but that was just one concern that came up from administration as we were talking through some scenarios.
It's, it's a, it's a really interesting challenge. I think it's a big challenge because what I, what I heard from community members was how, from kids, how, how important those extra classes were, like that's, I, I believe that's the push.
Yes.
Right? It's, it's not just, it's not adding the $300,000 to provide more to MHA. It was adding $300 to figure out how we, how could we keep these extra advanced opportunities, these unique opportunities for kids? Because for some of them, that was why they came to school. So I, I get the challenge, but that's what I think I was hearing from the community and saying, we need to figure out that piece. So in, in your work, as much as challenging as it is for admin to figure that out, I'm really looking forward to that one. That's where my lean is there, even though I know it's going to cause great disruption across all specials across the district. I think that's what I heard from the community. They wanted.
And the other piece too, that we can explore if you wish, is that, you know, we, we always have stipends for the after-school activities. And I know it adds another part of the day, but that's another way to address some of the, the clubs that happen without impacting a literacy block or a math block or a social studies or science. So there is that opportunity as well. So we can come up with some proposals and talk through them next week.
So that teachers aren't spending, are crazy, going to school, to school, to school every day. Wanted to poke at what your suggestion was Nancy in terms of having a, a month of STEM, STEAM, a month of music, a month of art as a block, and it rotates that way. That way, a teacher would have a classroom and, and some, some roots instead of being mobile.
At least for, at least for like two months.
Yeah.
Then they'd be.
So we'll look forward to.
Yeah, we'll map out, we'll map out some more scenarios.
And next is the financial summary?
Bye, cool. Thank you.
Right. Did everybody get a copy? May I just go back? Advertise for world language?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Caution on that. And Jerry, are you all set if we advertise for world language?
Please, you have a form of vote, like a motion?
A second?
Teacher?
No, this is the one that they're putting back in. That we're putting back.
Oh, so do we need a motion or we're, that's what I mean, a motion? Cause it's, they already existed.
She resigned.
Yeah.
Resigning this evening.
Okay, that's one of the reasons. All right.
A second.
Yes, yes.
Oh. So Peg made, were you?
To make the first?
I did.
Lauren seconded.
So, and she repeat the motion so I know what we're going on? Just to post to rehire the.
Okay.
I just didn't. I didn't hear what you said, okay. All in favor?
Thank you.
Definitely.
Um, so our revenue is right on track. We're looking at still waiting on eight percent, which is a month's worth of revenue from the state, from the towns. That's pretty on track. We have that extra bit in there that is that efficiency main. That we culled down under expenses. So we're getting to the end of the year. It's always a very interesting time for me as I try to make sure we've grown all of the costs over fiscal year. One thing I will point out, special education is very close. Again, we have expended and we have encumbered the summer salaries. We are having to make that end-of-year kind of movement. Some discussions this year with the state of Maine, they are changing the way they reimburse us for that high-cost out-of-district student. And where the prior eight to 10 years, we have put it through our local entitlement grant. They are now not reimbursing us unless we pay it with local funds. So I've had to move that out of the local entitlement grant and into our local budget for this year. So that's, that balance is lower than we would have anticipated. We, so what I anticipate is that special education is going to go over budget for the year. But I don't anticipate, for example, if you look at regular instruction, they still have quite a balance there after the encumbrances. I anticipate that there's plenty to cover. It just will be over in special education probably and under in regular. You'll notice too, our maintenance expenses are, we have about $42,000 left. That is probably gonna go over budget, I'm anticipating based on just electricity bills. We know that those have been coming higher all year. But again, we have other categories that have money. And that's where that 5% that you approved in a previous meeting where it allows me to transfer the budget from one category to another to cover overages, that's where this will come into play. So I'm not concerned that we will overspend this year, which is my charge. But we, I, at this point, can't tell you if, how much we would have rolling into our fund balance.
Where, where are you moving the local entitlement grant fund to? Like if, if we were using them for sending students out of replacement, right? You're having to move money from regular ed in there. So what are you using the?
So it's not even tech, it, it would move the budget, it wouldn't move the expenses. So all of the special ed expenses that I need to move out of the, or make sure don't fall in the grant will come into the special education expense line.
Okay.
So there'll be a, a stake. But if we are allowed to move that 5% between categories, there's enough budget money so that I don't overspend the bottom line.
But I think Josh is asking, do we have, does that mean we have local entitlement money that we can spend elsewhere?
Oh, no.
Right, so how are you, where are you spending that now? Like, you know what I mean? Cause if it was, if there was so much, if it was 200,000 for a local entitlement grant that you're using for that placement, what do you use that 200,000 for now?
So there's lots of staff that will use up that funding for this year. I think we're.
In special education?
In special education only. And I think we're at a place now where we have fewer openings in special education than this last few years. Like we've had trouble hiring teachers and ed techs for those programs. And what I'm, and we've had to make that move of we budget something in the grant, but again, have to move it local to meet that maintenance of effort that we've talked about before. Now we're spending enough locally and our budget so that we, I think in fiscal '25, we will be back to almost right on where, you know, where we need to be. And so I think that's, I think we're moving in a good direction in that way.
So any unexpended funds, does, where does that money go?
That money all goes into fund balance. So it's basically over time, any, any revenue we bring in, less expenses. If we have money remaining, it goes into a fund balance. And then when we do the budget, we take a look at how much is accumulated and we use it to offset the next year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. All right, let me know if you have questions.
Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome. And next we have employment.
Okay, so we are nominating Krista Bowie for Excel Director. Krista took over as an interim Excel Director last year. So we are formally bringing her to take over the director part of the Excel position. So she would keep teaching three-fifths and do the director piece two-fifths.
I make the motion? Second? All in favor? Is the total cost of that gonna be the same or less than what we're doing in the past? Are we?
That was the one that she put it forward herself, saying she wasn't really, it wasn't the full-time and she was more teacher than director. And she suggested that we shorten it in the, in the budget.
Yeah.
Yes. And then also just, just to be clear, the previous director had a different level of experience in terms of years in the district. So the funding looks a little different just based on person to person. So it's gonna be a little less.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There was a, a commitment with Krista really about transitions between all grades, but primarily the middle school to the high school, so going from seventh to eighth grade. So she wanted to build in a little more teaching time to help with that transition.
Excellent.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so then we go on to some resignations. We have Molly Jacobson, who is currently the speech and language pathologist at North Berwick. And she is resigning to take a similar position in Kittery.
I make the motion with regrets. I love Molly. Second? All in favor?
All right, and then we have Amara Dubis, who is currently a world language teacher at the high school, and she accepted a position in Marshwood.
Motion to accept. With regrets or second? All in favor?
The next one is Jessie Young. He's the physical education teacher at Hussey School. He's moving to Massachusetts.
Motion to accept. Second? Second? All in favor?
Okay, the last one for this evening is Phil Swayze. Phil is currently the physical education teacher at Noble Middle School and he's retiring. So he had retired previously to coming to the district and he came to the district, who he's now officially retiring again.
Motion to accept.
Second?
All in favor?
All right, that's it.
Superintendent update?
Okay, so just a few things. First of all, just, I'm, I'm sure for those of you who were not at graduation or not able to be at graduation, it was an event.
It was an event.
Another statement.
So we had the rain and then as soon as, as soon as we started marching, the electricity went out. So the staff and our board members and.
And the audience.
Did the pomp and circumstance for our students.
Some people were coughing and other people were circumstancing. It wasn't, it wasn't fully in sync, but it was really, really.
Yes, so we, we did have some comments from the students about, we're not in tune. You guys aren't in tune. Lucky. Yeah, yeah, and, and we didn't practice this. But regardless of all of that, it was a very joyous evening.
Yeah, memorable.
Very memorable.
Yeah.
It's like the electric.
Graduation parties.
Ten minutes before.
That's right.
Yeah.
You know, we, it's always a hard call to make and you have to make it so early in the day, like at 10 o'clock in the morning to, cause setup just takes a long time. But if we had been inside and the power blew, it would have been worse.
Oh, that's true. That would have been way worse.
Yeah.
So, yeah, people have been in the auditorium with no.
Right, no air, no air going through.
And no light beat.
But the electricity didn't go out in the school. It only went out.
No, it did, no, it did.
Eventually.
So the, the, the reality of it was is that when this, when the electricity goes in here, the generators kick in. And so there's lights in some, but it's not like a full-on, yeah, yeah. But yes, I, we were all like, what's going on right now?
Okay, the other, just a couple more updates. The kindergarten teachers across our district met today for five hours just to start programming the first month of, of school. And very excited and, you know, looked at, looked at a lot of their resources that they have. And, you know, just to be consistent among all three towns with kindergarten and they're feeling very, they left feeling very excited and very tired from this year, but very like invigorated about the direction for next year. So that went really well. I just wanted to go through a couple of dates just to make sure we're still good with these dates. The first one is June 20th, so that's next week. We'll talk more about the consolidation, the, the proposals for non-consolidation. And that, that's probably the, the big agenda item for that evening. I just wanted to make sure that July 11th works still. So we have Allison in the audience and we have Nancy in the audience. So that evening, we scheduled four to 6:00 PM for a board workshop with our Drummond and Woodsom, our lawyers.
Say it again, what was the date?
July 11th. I just wanna make sure that that's still an okay day, or do you need to, do we need to bump it? They're available. Connor is going to be the lawyer who's going to be working with us and he's available that evening.
And that's at four o'clock?
Four o'clock. So we can modify the time and, and/or, because we have a board meeting at seven typically. We, so we can have a board meeting at six, so we can go four to six with a board meeting at six. Or we can go five to seven with a board meeting at seven.
I would prefer that.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Five o'clock.
For that, the time is.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Five, five o'clock for this?
For the.
Drummond and Woodsom. Yes.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So, so five to seven?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then, and then the board meeting at seven?
Seven.
Okay.
Yeah. And then August 15th is that third, the third Thursday, so that's our normal schedule. So we will keep that, does that still work? Okay. Okay.
What are the other dates that we added in?
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Jen pull them all out.
Yeah, okay, they don't need to.
Yeah. So the big, the big ones are June 20th, July 11th and August 15th.
What's the time for the August 15th?
Seven o'clock.
For next week too, at seven?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so we'll pull all the other dates off. I think they're just recurring.
These are the, these are the only board dates through the summer.
Yes.
At this point.
Yes.
Is our hope and plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah, really. All right.
That's it.
Can I, can I ask a question about school nurses for the summer? Are there gonna be school nurses in the schools, in every school? Or is there a school nurse available by phone call?
Usually there's one housed at the high school. There's often one at Hussey School because there's a big concentration of the Nolton students come over for summer programming as well as the Hussey students are there for programming.
Okay.
So that's that, but we can confirm that because sometimes like last year, there was one nurse for a period of time that focused on those, all of it.
In rotating?
Yes.
So, so they were, there was a rotational nurse?
Yes.
I'll find out before the end of the night, cause I just texted Amy.
Okay.
Okay.
Find out, cause we do, we, we definitely have coverage, but not always every building.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So one at Lebanon, when they, when they do summer school? We have had traveling, so let me, I'm not, I don't wanna say anything confirmed until I confirm with, with Amy.
Okay. Uh, public input?
Uh, Stan works, just the, Stan works in North Berwick, just a clarifier for the, I think, July 20th meeting? Is that the one with the lawyers, maybe the 11th? Is the first part the not public and then the second part is kind of a normal board meeting where it would be open to public? Or is that, I'm just clarifying?
A board workshop is public.
Okay, so.
There's no public input at that point.
It's open, but no, okay. And then the second, the second would be?
It's a regular meeting.
With?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And then all the dates that were discussed, are those the normal board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Other public input? So this is the exec, excuse me, executive session?
I'm a dancer. No, make, no motion to go into executive session. One MRSA 4056A, LSH, please.
Thank you.
Second it.
All in favor? Okay. Thank you, everybody.